...the gala.
Yeah.
So for those of you who are wondering, the mayor is attending an event this evening. So I have the honor and privilege, thank you Randy, of stepping in for him tonight. We have three, actually, yeah, there's four listed on there. We actually have three items tonight. The EDC requested that the banner and poll element be pushed to march because they wanted a little bit more time to gather some data. So we're going to be talking about the kayak launch memo. We have a report on the additional trash receptacles that were installed and we have an opportunity to talk a little bit about the zoning ordinance before that is introduced at next week's meeting. And Pat's here. I may, if you don't want to call any to do a quick recap, if you guys recall, we have a few options on the table in terms of, not just yet, but if we want to revisit and have a chance to have a little bit more dialogue before that introduction. So why don't we start with the kayak launch, John? I know you've prepared a memo for us tonight. And you and Jeff, Jeff Noyes, just so everyone knows.
Here, I'll use the pointer here.
Here, John, 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 this one. Okay, this one flips it this way or that way. Okay, let me bring that up for you one second.
I just want the laser.
It has a laser on the handle, so.
Oh, this does. Oh, a little bit of everything here, huh?
Yeah, you want the first thing you want that with the.
The mat.
The mat. I'm going to turn it on.
They push up now, they get a pointer there.
Yeah, can you see it here? You have it. Do you see it?
No.
Here.
See what one of these instead? Just make it easier.
John, let me see that one, I'll show you. I'm sorry. We didn't have time to rehearse. Here we go.
It's all good.
See this? Button right here, the red one?
The red one.
The top straight one, that's for the pointer. Okay, you see it?
Yeah, you're down.
Yeah. Hi Karen. Backed out tonight.
I know, excitement. You're onstage.
Well, my dancing shoes on. All right, this is the kayak report, kayak launching report. And this was a cooperative effort by a lot of people. Karen, Moses, and Jeff Noyes worked with me and then we consulted town staff and we worked for a couple, three weeks here. And we took a look at the environment committee's recommendation for kayak launch. I don't know, what was the reason? Was it for the pier or the beach or just on some other beach?
No, it was for the pier initially.
For the pier, okay. So, well, we looked at it, we looked at it as a, the potential area of the pier and the town beach, everything from Atlantic Avenue to Third Street. We initially did a screening of all the obvious opportunities and we ruled some out. Obviously dragging a kayak across the beach through the beach crowd only gets you to the waterway and then when you get to the waterway, you're trapped because you're inside the sea, that will not, and there's no way to get behind it. So anything, anything, anything across the sand beach doesn't work. We did look at down around the Third Street Pier. There seems to be some opportunities down there. We looked on the north side of the Third Street Pier. There's a little spat of sand beach there, but it's quite low and that area floods and then when we have summer high tides and that area would be out of commission for too long to make it, not work well. And we'd have to invest a fairly heavy duty steps or ramp to get down there on the south side of the Third Street Pier. Then we looked on the north side of the Third Street Pier. Now, on the north side of the Third Street, that's where the present kayak boat, paddle boat concession is. And that area would be, that area does not flood and that would work with a lodge except there's just no good way to get to it. There's two ways to get to it. One is get your boat to the pavilion and go down the steps and drag it all the way across the beach and that beach is quite active in the summertime, a lot of people. That's just not a good option. And another option would be to build a set of steps from near the Third Street intersection to that area. There's just too much going on with the paddle boats, the paddle boats and the kayak rental there to say that that's a bylaws. So we discounted that, that plus any beach access. So then we were down to two options. One was on the pier itself or there's a little spit of, there's a little spit of land where the breakwater hits the shore next to the Atlantic Avenue walkway. So we called those option A and option B. Option A, which I'll be first, is the slip option. Do we have the picture of that?
Yeah, there, right there. Now you need to flip over.
All right. This is a, this is the most westerly boat slip on the pier. It's easily accessible from the walkway down and then, let's go to the next picture. Now, now, let's go, yeah, here's, here's, here's a plan B of what would happen here. As you can see, on the big heavy line on the left is, that would be the lower walkway and then the dark line which is horizontal is the figure pier and the dark circles or the pilings in the slips. Right, what we have here, we have a 13 foot by 30 foot, 15 foot wide by 30 foot long boat slip. And we could, we could buy pre manufactured units that would give us a, what we call a low profile. Is that the wrong button?
Yeah, you hit the button.
I thought I was trying to get the.
Let me do it for you. There you go. There you go.
Okay, go back to option A. There we go, there we go. Good. All right, I'll stick on the red button here.
Whoops.
Fat thumbs, fat thumbs. All right. You would start, you would come off the lower walkway and down something we call the gangway. That's a, that's a metal structure with a skid free service on it and you would walk down. Then it would be about a three foot drop down to the four components there which would be bolted together and that's what we call a low profile dock. That thing would be about 12 feet wide and it would be about 27 feet long. It would be, it floats in the water. It has very low freeboard, probably somewhere in the order of eight to 10 inches of freeboard. Kayakers love launching for some of this. They just get, they get their kayak down onto the service there, they get it entered and they can kind of just scoot it off and it just kind of drops into the water. And then they can go off. And this is on the south side of the pier. We picked the south side because, some advice to Jeff as a user of this area says, getting out from the north side is very close to where the fishermen are on, or the fishermen are on the north side and right around. And the north side is a little bit, a little more congested and using the south side, there's a nice wide opening in the breakwaters that they can get out without getting tangled up with the fishing activity. We're going to go through the options and then we'll give you the advantages and disadvantages. This scheme here is probably in the order of $15,000 to $20,000 to implement. We would, there's a couple vendors out there that make the gangway and make the low profile floating dock. If we decided to go forward with this, we would have to do some kind of procurement. It'd be real close to the $15,000 bid threshold, but we would have to take a look at that as to how the best way, if council decides this is what they would like to have done here, we would have to establish a path forward on that. So that's option A. Let's go to option B. Option B is a little spit of sand beach. It's north, it's where the breakwaters on the north side, the timber and the stone hit the beach. It's about, it's about 50 to 100 feet, maybe less, up from the turn in the boardwalk at the Hatch House. Everybody still calls the Hatch House, Mr. Hatch has lived there for years. There is actually, at that point.
Go back up John.
All right.
Get your finger off the button.
All right. There we go.
Okay.
All right.
Red.
All right. Right at this location.
John, get the other.
Where's the other one?
Right there, yeah.
Right about, right about here, there's already, right there, there's a four foot gate opening that the town put in. Actually, Gallow put that gate in a number of years ago with a cooperative agreement with some of the residents of Atlantic Avenue so they could go and get down to this little beach. It's about a two foot drop from the Atlantic Avenue boardwalk deck down to the beach area. We could, we could, and the only thing it really would cost is a set of $500 set of steps to get down to the beach. That would, that would allow the beach patrol would be, do a couple things. One, they would work with anybody who were going to bring their kayak to this location, get them through the lock gate and they also, according to Mr. Ball, this area is not needed for the public beach use and they would, if there was a potential for any kayak activity on a given day, they would cordial off this area with signage. So occasionally, apparently, people do say to this area, it's the overflow from the beach. Mr. Ball said, that's really not necessary. They, if they don't have this for beachgoers, that doesn't impede the success of the beachfront activity. So that's, that's option B, got a cost factor of less than $500.
Can you give us the pros and cons real quick, John? The pros of option A versus the cons of option B?
Costs?
The pros, the pros of option A.
You're stealing my thunder here. All right, all right. Let's go to the, let's go to, all right, here we go. Here's your advantages and disadvantages, okay? Option A. Option A, which is the, which is the low profile dock in a boat slip. The advantages, the advantages are for that, the beach launches are more difficult than the low profile dock launches. It takes a lot more, especially if the water tide is low and the, or there's any wave action in there, it's more of a challenge for the kayakers and we feel that if we had, if there were a situation where we had both the sand beach, option B, and the, and the floating pier in the slip, option A, a kayaker that came to the park lane, he's going to want to go, he's going to want to go to the slip. He won't want to drag his boat up the boardwalk to go across the beach. We think we'll get a lot more use out of option A than option B. So option A, the advantages, beach launches are more difficult and they're made more difficult by low water and waves, which would not be the case with, would not be the case with.
I think we're, we've got them, John. We can see them.
I'm out of sync here.
Yeah, we just read through them. We've got the paper in front of us. I'm curious to, before another council may answer the questions. Jeff, is there anything as an avid kayaker and Karen, who's actually been part of having this installed, that you guys want to say before we have a discussion?
Well, I mean, I think.
I was just going to say, just, we're using kayaker as a very shorthand word. We're really talking about all kinds of non-motorized vessels. It could be a standard paddleboard, it could be a rowing shell. So we're using kayaking as a really general term, but it's just really anybody who'd like to access the water on a, you know, human powered something or other.
What I was going to say is, in general, we're trying to offer a really good experience to somebody that is a kayaker that's looking for a place to launch. We want them to come, have an easy place to launch and somewhat isolated from the beachgoers. Kayakers don't want to be in a big crowd. They want to go someplace where they can launch, just be out on the water and have a, have a good experience. The general idea is, the easier it is for them to launch and the closer they'll be to the parking lot, the more likely it is.
Yeah, even from a, even from a patrol, from a beach, beach patrol standpoint, the option A and the, on the pier is close, they're, they're closing by, that'd be easier for them to manage. And there's another advantage to the option A, the pier too. There's a, right where the, where that lower walkway is and where the gangway would be down the ramp, there would be a really easy way to build some racks underneath the pier and have people store their kayaks there, maybe get some long time term users there. And that, that, that opportunity wouldn't, wouldn't be available in option B with the, with the beach entry, launch entry at the north end.
And what about luring like clubs? You've talked about kayak clubs, who, I mean, part of this is the economic development aspect of getting different kinds of people attracted to the town. That was part of the report. Does option, do you feel like option A would?
There was a place that would be listed, right Karen? I forget what it was, but you were.
Oh, right. The, you know, Calhoun County is working on a water access.
And we're going to be part of it, right?
Yeah. And you know, some of these, and Dracene Club is, one advantage is the parking there. It's fairly straightforward to tell people how to get there. There's the, the pier is fairly wide boardwalk, so it would be pretty easy for a small group to kind of coalesce there without creating a big burden.
Yeah, the staging, the staging actually much better than trying to stage it from the Atlantic Avenue boardwalk.
And anybody who really wanted a beach access to be able to launch from the beach still can. Nobody's going to stop them from launching straight from the beach. It's just that for most, most users, that's a, you know, getting through the crowd, across the beach can be a challenge. But there are people who prefer soft launches and that's still there for them.
And to some extent, either of the other two options, the ends of the beach require you to, really, you've got to walk away from your gear. At some point, when you're leaving, you have to put it somewhere, then go ask permission and get somebody to let you in. And then when you come back, you've got to leave your boat on the pier, come back over, ask permission to open the gate again. Logistically, it's just not, it's really not what we're looking for.
The only question I had, Jeff, and I know you get a lot of experience around the water, but being out there on the bay and sometimes you get awkward seas, awkward waves and all, out of that floating dock, I know I've seen a lot of them, probably jet skis run up on ones that.
I wondered that myself. And honestly, the way this design looks, they weren't, I thought the design would be, and it may still end up being this way, where they're using the existing pilings as rings around those pilings so that it would float up and down and be supported by that. The one estimate we got, it looks like they intend to just drive, you know, drive poles and support it, you know, so it can be self-supporting. Basically drive pipes in the corner.
Easy dock saw the exposure here. And they said, the system they have with anchoring that slow, low profile dock to the, that low profile dock to the pier with the gangway and, and they suggest snuggling the thing to the existing pile. They say it will withstand the, it will withstand the choppy seas we get in that area.
I think that's probably, yeah, the important piece of it, it would be tethered around the larger pilings. So you don't want it to break loose and end up on the beach shores.
I have a couple of questions. A, and it says, well, first of all, the problem would be, I think, we have a lot of problems. A, maintaining it, controlling it, the neighbors.
You mean the other option?
Right, the other option, I just don't think is realistic. Now, I'm also saying that we need to send this thing out and get some tighter numbers, but why so large? I mean, is there a reason why it's that large where, we were just looking, I mean, there's like, there's a nice one over, what, 8 by 14? Do more than one person get on it at one time? I mean.
It could. I think part of it may have been driven by the length of the slip. We need to get beyond the end of the slip a little bit, just because the pilings get away if you don't do that. Out of the ramp.
Mike, I think this thing is four modules and the modules are seven by 12, bolted together. The four sevens get us stacked up, give us 27 feet. If we did it with two modules instead of, instead of four or three modules, we could, we could make it smaller.
And then the other thing is.
I don't think, I don't think we dramatically change the cost by making it four modules rather than two or three.
I did notice they even had to add extra flotation under where the ramp hits, so it may just have a certain size to support the end of the ramp and the number of people. Maybe that the low profile dock isn't quite full.
So the ramp, you're talking about the ramp from the finger pier down to the.
The gangway.
Okay, all right. The other part is, it's in here, it says, easier to convert to ADA standards in the future. Why would we not just do ADA from the get-go?
Could.
Well, if.
What does that mean?
If we're going to make it ADA from the get-go, then we can't do it with a 10 foot gangway. We're going to have to go, we're going to have to, we're going to have to increase the gangway length to maybe, maybe 30 feet. You need, you need 12 feet at a gangway. If we're at low tide, if we're low tide and the difference in elevations, three feet, you would need, you would need 36 to 40 feet of gangway to do that.
Right, I understand. Karen, is there any, I mean, do you see people, like, I mean, I don't know, it's just kind of weird that a town will put something in that's not ADA approved. I just don't know how that's going to look, first of all. Second of all.
Well, I think the part, when we talked, it was, you know, can you do it in phases? I mean, do you want to, the extension of it then does, adds, you know, more cost? And so I personally think we should try and go to ADA. Oh, stop and join. There's also, do you have to be ADA 100% of the time? So do we just ignore the low, low tides and figure that if it's really, really low tide, you might not be ADA because you're on the slope? And you just say, well, that's just life, that's the way the environment is and we can only, there's so much.
So design it based upon high tide?
Or like some.
Or medium.
Some, you know, so you don't have to sign any ADA.
The 10 foot, the 10 foot works with a median high tide, yes. And it will be, at low, at low tide, that gangway is going to be above the, ADA ramp slope is 8%. And we're going to be up, we're going to be at low tide with that 10 foot ramp, we're allowed to be, you know, 15, 20%.
The other is.
But not, but still, for non-ABA purposes, it would be fine.
The other is, the schematic just shows these, you know, platforms. They may not be ADA accessible that way. You may actually have to put in an ADA launch facility that would be, if you've seen these, they're just like these little legos that kind of fit together in all different ways. And so if you went to the ADA, you may need the ADA.
I think we're going to find out from John today. We don't want to do anything.
There's different ways, there's different ways to do ADA. There's actually some ADA where the, where the floating facility is, has a lot more freeboard and you actually get into some, and there's a crank and you crank yourself down to the water level.
And I think that's what come out in the bid process.
All right, my last, my last, do we, do you charge? Do people charge for this or no?
They charge $5 a launch in Chesapeake Beach. It seems like we probably charge the same.
Okay.
I would want to say you're a kayaker, so if you walked up in this place and charged $5, you're going to go, no, Dad, I'm out.
It'd be fine, but if they charge that, I'd go to Chesapeake Beach.
Right.
We don't charge anything.
Absolutely.
Right now, we don't charge anything.
Right, you don't charge anything to use the beach. It's a kayak.
All right, cool. I just think we need to absolutely send it out to, you know, some prices.
Are you guys good with that? Doing a path forward to, yeah, I mean, I think we need to.
We're going to check a job.
Do we have kayaks available for rent?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Those will all move up from here now.
I bet you they would.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, which would be better for them too.
And maybe if they did decide to charge, they could help with the collection of.
That stuff we can figure out later, yeah. It's good to know that we have the option. All right, so we're in agreement that we'll move forward with a path to put out an RFP on this and see what our options are and we can address the.
It won't be an RFP, it'll be a bid straight.
A bid, a straight bid, okay.
We don't need an RFP for this.
A bid, yeah, okay.
Clark's floats.
We only got prices for one.
Yeah, Clark's float, they're literally paid a rate in deals.
Easy dock, it looks like is in and out.
Cool. Yeah, that's good. I mean, that's good stuff, yeah.
So you're good, John, so you can have something prepared for us for next week, sort of a path forward or an update on that?
Yes, sure.
Thank you. Thank you Jeff and Karen. You guys have been an awesome team.
I'm excited about it.
All right, well, I think we're good on that. Appreciate it. I think that's it. Is there something else you want to say?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Again, thanks to Jeff and Karen and Richard Ball was a great help to give us some background and trying to, how we would interface this kind of activity with the beach patrol.
I think Richard would like Plan A.
Yeah, exactly.
But Plan A really requires, oh, Plan A is going to be outdated.
No, Plan A, he would like Plan A. He would like Plan B.
Yeah, it was a very thoughtful process. I think we can.
So I think we can feel good about our decision. All right, so let's move on to our second item. And this is really just an update. Richard actually prepared this report on the, remember we implemented additional trash receptacles after a thorough assessment of the town and where we could have additional? Do you have that report? Can you pull it up?
I don't know.
You only want to get it. You only afford it to. Joanna or Stacy?
Come here. If I can get my email.
They just got me from Truor Jones, they want help. No, she didn't get it yet.
And I can. I can share it verbally too, as you're trying to do that. So what, basically what they did was, so the new trashcans were installed in early November and they just started pulling a record at looking at how often they were emptied or pulled, is the terminology that they use. And this count is for 26 days, was the first 26 days in January. So, and this lists eight locations, Donnie, so I thought we had 10 trashcans, were there two additional?
Um, no, there were eight.
Was it eight? Okay, okay. So San Francisco, if you guys recall, so one location was San Francisco, one at Burnt Oaks, one at Ninth and Atlantic, one at the Boys and Girls Club at Museum side, that hasn't been installed yet, right? There's one at Fifth and Chesapeake, Fifth at Bay, one at Mexico, and one at Municipal Lot behind Chesapeake Bounty. Anybody want to guess which one had the, was emptied the most?
San Francisco.
Mexico.
You win.
I was going to say Mexico or bounty, one of those.
Actually, so there was a tide, so the most that they pulled, four times, so emptied four, and again, rumors, January, New Year's, we had, you know, snow. Mexico, the one at Mexico was emptied four times. The one at Fifth and Bay was emptied four times. The next most used was the one at Ninth and Atlantic. I wasn't really surprised, there was a lot of, you know, walking traffic. That was pulled three times. The one at Burnt Oaks, twice. San Francisco, Fifth and Chesapeake, and the one at Chesapeake Bounty were all emptied one time. Now, I wrote back and I asked Richard, is that a lot, you know, what do we expect? I wrote back and I said, how does that compare to the ones on the boardwalk? And he said, those are basically still, even during January, were emptied like daily. Yeah. So he's going to, he said he would provide this report if we're interested on a monthly basis and give us the comparisons, include these new ones along with the ones on the boardwalk. I mean, are we curious?
I'd be curious just if there's, what you see in the street, you know, and I don't know if there's any way really doing that other than, you know, that feeling of people who.
I asked him that, Karen, I said, do you have any other observations? Do you feel like you're seeing less litter, you know, in these areas for the trashcans? And he said he wasn't, he wasn't sure. Now, I don't know if he's physically emptying them or it's one of the staff, but that was, exactly. And I think if he could include that in the report, like, we're actually seeing less litter, because that was the main reason, was we were seeing a lot of litter. So is this a good fix? So you guys, do you want?
I mean, I can see around like San Francisco, something like that would be interesting. But when you start getting around Mexico and Chesapeake Bounty, I mean, I can see why they're, you walk out, restaurant, I mean, you might, I mean, going into a restaurant and throw stuff in there.
Exactly.
But interesting is the one away from the restaurants. San Francisco and stuff like that, because you don't, you have to, you have to be walking to come in.
Right. Well, and that was the idea when we walked the town, it was, okay, where are pedestrians? Where are people likely to, like, you know, throw things either out their window or walking traffic? So I'm curious to see this and how it compares with the summer. So it'd be interesting to see the winter months compared to the, to the summer.
How many times is that?
Two. Two. So the most was, it was between one and four was the most.
Okay, I'm asking because there's one member that, or, I'm worried I was going to say every time she went by, she must stop there.
I've seen, and I've seen the one at Ninth and Atlantic, I mean, fall.
A lot of people walk in there. You know, ten year boardwalk, walk all the way in there and walk in and out.
Yeah.
Walk, walk. It's a good decision, Jeff. Mexico, we'd really appreciate it, they want to thank their cash support.
Oh, didn't they say something?
Yeah, they were, they looked nice, it was nice, I don't, I appreciate it.
And they feel like, they felt like they needed it, people were kind of dropping trash there.
And they were saying like, a lot of them was coming in because they were like, they got, and then sitting outside, and then sometimes they went and threw it out, cars and then actually had.
Yeah, no, that one's full. I mean, you can sort of see the pattern. All right, so is that, do we want to add anything else to the report? I think this is pretty thorough. All right, okay. All right, there's nothing else on that? Any other comment? So the third item, let's move on to the zoning ordinance. Again, this is going to be introduced next week, so here's sort of our chance to ask any additional questions. You know, it'd be nice to sort of get a sense of where we all are so we don't have to belabor it too much next week. But Pat, maybe you can just, do you want to walk us through those options again?
Yeah, I can.
You know, pull up the one that you recommended and then we can look at.
Is that your one? Yeah, this is, this is what we've got right now. And go ahead with the next one and we'll see what we've got.
The topic for me.
No. As Gerald Donovan said the other day, we watched his presentation, he's going to expand his hotel double in size and he said, oh, it looks like I need a drink. I don't do that well. This is the one that we've adopted on the left and this is the one that we're recommending on the right. And I think the next one actually shows the one we're recommending better, yeah. And the only difference between this and the options that we created for you as a choice are we've got a very large CM, we just, we had different kinds of commercial and we just made it all one, it's commercial. And we put a buffer, which is R2, in between R1, which is single-family residential and commercial. And R2 allows for more dense residential. It doesn't create it, there is some there, there's a couple of small private dolleys, it allows for multifamily residential there if, if any of that redevelops. So that's a buffer between single-family residential and commercial. And it allows for more dense residential if possible. Now, we've got roughly 2,000 people here in the town. We can't grow too much. We're not very big and there's not too many places for us to grow. But if we did get some multifamily and got it in there, we might expand by about 10% tops. And that's not huge, a 10%, okay? And it would help to support the businesses that we hope are going to get, come in, in the commercial and in the waterfront, bigger waterfronts there. So that was our thinking. We also did a little bit in residential in terms of we went backwards. We zoned in such a way that some of the 25-foot lots that still exist, I guess you all had a moratorium and like, use it now or forever hold your peace. We went back a little bit and created some 37 and a half foot lots that people could combine and maybe do some infill, because there were still some of those left. So that is the other change that we had. Okay, one more. This is one of your revisions that was suggested and where the R2, actually, what exactly is different there? Randy, help me out.
Whoops. What? This is as, this is as my information.
Okay, this is what we have, okay. Next one. Because I was going to say, that's something. Okay, now what we did is we cut off the top that goes up from Dayton towards Erie. And we cut that off and it just made it right along Dayton Avenue. And so the potential to expand, and that's actually, I have a museum, correct? Is no longer, so we can, now one of the things you have to realize is that the CPAT recommended that we do some senior apartments in that area. And so the potential for doing that is lessened by this, but that's one of the revisions. Then the next one is a little bit more to the left, but to the north, not as much. So those are your three options. And, you know, it's fairly simple, it's very straightforward, but it's entirely up to you. The zoning ordinance belongs not to Atlantic Fish, but to town council.
Well, you put a lot of thought into it. We respect your expertise, you know, so that, Pat, I don't know if you have these numbers. I'm just curious, if we were to go with option A versus what you recommend, how many fewer people, do you know how, how much got lessed?
It would have more than a half.
So instead of 200 additional people, we might have 100 additional people in town.
Maybe so. It would significantly cut your ability to put in apartments. And in my professional opinion, we need them. It creates a diversity of housing that, and some people will differ with me, but I walk through the town, and before we ever went through this exercise, I walk through the town and I point out those apartment buildings that we have and say, look at that, look what we have. Because it's the diversity of housing in towns like this that create the diverse residential population that we have. And it's that type of housing that creates the type of town that people, when I had planning companies here, I don't know if you all knew that, but I brought in planners, I think it was a year and a half, two years ago, and we had over 100 planners come and they admired the town. We actually went from building to building to hold the sessions and they were envious of the town. But it was things like that that they saw that they admired. Because of that type of housing that bring people to the town. So anyway, that was our recommendations. I don't know that it's actually going to happen. And I don't, you know, but it creates a potential. So we'll go back to my colored recommendation and then we'll go through slowly. Okay, so this is what we recommended in color. And go ahead, one more then, I guess that's the same thing. And then one, chopping it off so it doesn't go as far west. And then increasing it just a little bit, but to the south. And then again, it's, Richard. Now, I have to say that CPAT actually recommended to the north, I think was where they thought was ideal for some additional senior apartments.
Why did you guys go with that?
What, this one?
What, you know, what the planners, you're saying they recommended even further?
No, they recommended on the, on the right-hand side where it's cut off. Now, that was actually, I think, the area where they were specifically saying, they thought additional senior housing.
That you had, okay.
But it's, like I said, it's, I mean, it's up to you.
Questions for Pat or is anybody?
We had a discussion, I know Glenn brought it up concerning businesses working from your home, there was a square footage thing. And I think we talked about it again last time, that did get, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I can remember.
Yeah, the percentages were awful.
Right.
Occupation and whatever it was.
Yeah, and we changed it, 50%.
Exactly. So if you had an equally two-story house, you could have one floor be a business without having to live there.
Now, I can object, I can make sure that I got changed, but if it didn't, it was hosted.
Right now, I did, it's not quite a fat beyond translation, right now about 20% of our houses are stopped.
20%? And this one?
That includes a senior?
That includes that one, that includes, I'm including Southlands because there's so many rentals in there now. Still, I'm including the Baywatch because about half of those are rentals.
So you count each unit as, yeah, as a?
Yeah. Is it a park? Burnt Oaks is about 100. I'd guess it was about 18 back here at Crosslands, Ford, Second Street, and a couple oddballs that I know about, about the client stores, Two Francis Street here and the rental and the real estate office.
How many units would, do you think would the max be with the model that you proposed? Would it increase it by 20% to?
I didn't, I didn't, because honestly, the potential for that happening, I think is not high.
But that's an interesting point, you know, is there a comfort zone that we want to live in? We want half of our units to be apartment versus?
Well, I can, you have the 20% apartments, the 230 house houses, you know, 500.
No, it's 200 residents, not, not units.
I'm talking about physical buildings. You know, we have, call 200, let's just put, I'm going to say, call 200 apartments and about 200 actually from within that townhouses out of 1,000 or 1100 residences. We've got 40% of our residential base is more like that.
And what are you saying?
I think that's pretty, a good percentage for a.
A 5%?
Yeah, for a county that is not a apartment, tad house market. When you stop thinking about it.
Ready?
Well, I mean, that's the problem, isn't it? I mean, it's the county and their policies, you know, I mean, it's not that it's not a market, it's a, it's a intentionally depressed market for those things. And so as a municipality, we have to figure out how to deal with that. I mean, you know, I mean, certainly there would be young professionals that would move into Dunkirk and live in apartments and probably buy homes and be productive members of this county. But county politics are such that, you know.
We don't.
We don't, but we're afraid of new people, so, you know, so now as a municipality, we have to either figure out, do we, you know, do we embrace that? Do we hope to get the young professionals here? Maybe. Or do we, that's what we do. And I don't know if they would be answering, but I think that's really the heart of the problem is we have a county and a municipality that I don't think necessarily agree on your policy.
Gerald Donovan did a market study and he is now proposing to build a 58-unit apartment for rentals. And you should have heard people in Chesapeake Beach squeal. And he said, no, I'm telling you right now, I will sell, I will rent. Everyone goes out and he said, I want rentals. That is an economically viable decision for me based on my market.
He was squealing, people were squealing about the concern.
They didn't want market rate rentals in their town.
And those are going to be high.
He lives in Florida?
Yeah, he does, yeah, he does. Let's not forget that part. And those are going to be high-dolling rentals too, because they're coming with boat slips.
1,700 to 2,500 dollars. First of all, we're assuming that we're going to attract a young working group, we're assuming professionals. Just because you have a rental, and I'm in the real estate business, doesn't mean you attract a young professional. There's more to it than the three restaurants we have here. We can have all the restaurants and all the things in North Beach that we want, you're not going to attract my, my daughter's group. Ain't going to happen. So I would be very careful. I don't think it's, it's, the rental, the rental is the issue, is what do we want our town to look like is the issue. That's my issue. And, you know, we always hear about how attracting young professionals, I don't know, man, there's a lot of rumbles around here, I've run out there every day in North Beach, and ain't a damn young professional calling me up. So let's be careful assuming we're going to attract all these young professionals here to come to a town that has a tiny. The things that Gerald's doing over there is good for them. The things that Calhoun County does for them is good for them, but we're incorporated and we have our own desires and goals as a town. So my concern is, is that you can't say I'm only rented to young professionals. It's discrimination. What you're opening up to is another 200 rentals, period. And there's, I'm not saying there's any wrong rentals, but just understand the facts, ask the facts.
Mike, what, what, what point of rentals do you think start looking more carefully replacing the ones?
Mainly condos. PG County, most are condos, the discrep, PG County couldn't buy a condo right now under VA or FHA because the Lincoln leasing rates are so high. I don't think we have that, we won't have, but.
Couple, couple HOA meetings.
But they're not condos. They're townhouses.
I, I would go back to what you said, Mike, about the vision, how we want the, the town to look, which brings me concern I have about the people living on those streets that somebody raised at the last meeting, I think it was you.
Good thing.
Randy, you know, talk about this buffer, but is, is that what people want to see across the street too? I mean, I think we need some of it. It's just, you know, your point about, I mean, and the, the percentage, where's the balance, you know?
Well, I mean, I can tell you what the folks I know, they average, they say we sell a couple meters. They, they like the buffer like that now, just they will do 20 hours as well through a new story apartment. To look across the street, so.
I, I, hopefully we get a large group of people next week. I mean, just to get the input of all the concerned or not concerned, but we just. I think there's more, there's moving parts.
Probably is, though.
Well, I know that, but I'm just saying, I, I understand that. So, no, I, I like, I, I think there's a lot of good things come out of this, just we could, we'll just make a decision next week?
Well, I, you know, I'm, I'm, I, I mean, I would be, option A would be mine if we, I don't stand R2. Then option A would be mine, for the one. Because I, you know, again, I've never seen, I, I didn't see the reason to shove R2 through Erie along Third or Second District. Yes, I have, there's a apartment building there.
I, I could support, I could support that. I'm willing to say that. I would, I would support option A.
It just seems like a chicken and the egg kind of thing, doesn't it? I mean, I don't disagree that young professionals don't want to rent a beach cottage that's not an square feet today. But military families probably would definitely rent the, you know, Station Bed Andrews would probably definitely rent apartments. People like me that commute into the city, or people that commute to Annapolis or something like that would probably definitely rent apartments. And be the future purchasers of homes, you know, in five or 10 years or something like that. But we don't know now, so I don't know. I don't know. Maybe option A here is, is of putting our hood in the water.
I was gonna say, we can always, can always expand it, right? You can always, you know, revise it if you're saying.
I'll be serving once, so I'll be serving too, so I thought.
Maybe you'll want to move to an apartment. Buy it in a year, Bob.
I'll leave, I'll leave you for a while.
Well, we don't all have to go. Are we, everybody comfortable? Want to share anything else?
No.
Okay.
I'm good.
All right. So Pat, thank you again. So we'll officially introduce this.
It is more decision.
No, I, I do have a couple of questions on this. Not, not this. I, I think everybody knows, my, my main thing with this, with re-zoning, I think, is with the VRBOs, you know, I'm talking about this. And, yeah, I think we're getting a handle on it in this, after we have certain licenses, they have conditional use, have conditional use. And we pretty, we pretty much know who hasn't out who has. Well, yeah, there's, there's a couple that try to find on the radar.
It's very easy part of the, so I'm right.
My, uh, I'm, two concerns, and one is actually my anti-business part coming up. They're gonna have to go through a, a board of appeals here, get the conditional use. I don't see charging them full 250 or 300 dollars for board of appeals. I, I think, you know, the existing 15 or 20, existing as of the day to be adopted, it doesn't reflect, maybe it hasn't been. That those folks, if they come in within three months and apply for a public hearing, that they should get just a nominal charge, board of appeals. 20 dollars to come to the hour, whatever, whatever it is. Because isn't the fee from public hearing, you know, 250?
Really tiny.
And again, I, I, you know, I, I don't think we really have, really should crack down that kind of. You know, it's just a nominal fee.
For everybody or for those that are already legal?
For those, for those that are existing as of the day, this goes into effect.
Whether or not they're actually charging?
Good question, yeah. Well, okay, good, okay, for the ones who are legal paying, playing the lodging tax, that's the one.
Well, that's, that's separate than the zoning, right? We can address that as a separate, the fees and all of that. You're just bringing it up.
Yeah, I'm bringing it up, yeah. I mean, as far as, as far as what's in here for the zoning and, and, and putting the controls, yes. No, I mean, I, I noticed in here that they would have to go through a board of appeals. I, you know, I would say, again, put it in my anti-business hat, just everyone. But all the ones that are in existence, whether they're legal, technically or not legal by, on that day, give them a break.
No, I just wanted to say something.
Just one question. I, I was understanding that nobody's gonna be grandfathered in. None of the vacation owners are gonna be grandfathered in. Am I wrong?
John Chase said, the way we did it there, they all have to.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah, but I, what I'm saying is, yeah, that they all have to come in. They're not gonna automatically. But because they now have to have a public hearing, the conditional use with notification to neighbors, hey, this person was hooked or something. You know, I, I, I don't see charging full price for, for that. For those that are exist now. You know, somebody comes in, the manager says, I want to do that, okay, you're fine, yeah, you, you have to do that.
What is the point of the fee? Is it a barrier to entry or does it cover some of those costs?
It covers costs.
Why would you not charge a fee? Cover my time? My hourly, John's hourly wage?
Is this the license fee you're talking about?
No, it's an addition to.
This is an addition. This is going from the. Yes, to start the board of appeals here.
And then all the neighbors get notified.
And neighbors that have, you know, sign.
By certified mail. It's a process.
Yeah, well, I, I, yeah, and, and my thought was, since we're changing the rules, it would, after all, no. That's fine. You don't want to, that's fine.
I mean, I understand, it's no fault of their own.
Why don't we, I think we should have put it on another work session, have another deeper discussion on it. Because it, it doesn't impact next week.
No. No, but, but we, we need to get a lot of one way or the other because, you know, the one that's me starts wrecking, wrecking the march.
Talking about that. Vacation is gonna go out, so.
Yeah, right.
So, okay, let's, yeah, talk about it more.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, it was just something I threw out, and if you guys don't agree with it, that's fine. But it was just.
I mean, there's a cost to do it, so, I mean, if we're gonna make them go through it, there's a fee. Because, I mean, we can't, we can't lose money on it. And we're not gonna make money. We're not looking to make money.
We, we would, we lose money on anything.
I mean, I'm okay with it being $80.
Right. I mean, I don't, we're not here to make money off of it, just that we need to cover our costs.
Which is gonna be actually more than 250, when we trade down. I mean, you know, all, all of our benefits, all, all of our stuff like that actually costs us more than our fees.
All right. Maybe it's on agenda, future agenda to talk about.
That's a problem.
Joanne, our current parental license is three years, right? So does this one three-year bracket as well, or what happened?
This year started the three-year, so when we send out, we've been waiting for this process to end. FY16 is when I'll send them out. Now, they'll pay for FY16 all the way through 19 to get us through that process.
I was just trying to, if we would want that vacation rental fee, a more often license or, like, say they do vacation rentals for a year and then decide I don't need vacation rentals? Do you want to go more rental? How, would whichever be included for that?
I think as long as the fees are structured similarly, that would be a fluid.
I would agree with that, yeah.
Yeah, I was just thinking.
The other, the other thing we have to look at too, and that's what we played, so I think they, Pat, how we're talking about yesterday, before. Is the folks, vacation rentals in July, vacation rentals in August, and we go through monthly. Long-term rentals in September, they come March, and how we get.
I think we addressed that, Joanne. You said it was sort of like the, the most.
I, I believe that if you're a vacation rental, that if you rent for anything less than a year, you should be kind of still in that category as a vacation rental.
The strict, you fall in sort of the strictest category.
And then if you are a rental for multiple years, then that's turn into individual family.
So why don't you make it like a base license and then make it like a stamp, like, you know, I have a rental license with a vacation sand. So now I have.
Because, because you're not paying if you have lodging tax.
If you're, if the catch for the hotel tax applies.
We're losing 60 to 80 thousand dollars a year.
Yeah, no, I get that.
And the lodging tax. That's six cents of the tax rate.
But if they rent for over a month, you can't get that, right?
Nice to hear John weighed in, he said, if you're a short-term rental, you're a short-term rental all year. And, and the people who are renting, pay it. And so whether you're renting for a week or you're renting for two months, you pay it.
It'd have to be individual more than four months.
That's just, we wouldn't even have to do that.
So then if we're reverting to month-to-month, then it doesn't matter, because you've already got.
But if you were a short-term rental, that's what your license is?
No, I called the state and they said, oh, you pay the lodging tax if you rent for less than 30 days. If you stay for 30 days, you don't pay the lodging tax.
I think that's pretty standard, actually.
All right, you guys, well, I think we're getting off a little bit from the zoning.
I know that, actually.
Yeah, but remember, this is not our lodging tax. This is actually technically Cal- County's lodging tax, and I think their thing is four months.
Or considered a transfer, anything less than four months.
Yeah, so it's different rules for, different.
Yeah, it's technically Cal- County. We get, we get a good chunk of the lodging tax in Cal- County, and they pay. It's technically Cal- County's.
All right, can we move to public comment? Is there something else?
Clarification. Next week, when someone introduces the ordinance, the zoning ordinance, which option is going to be incorporated into the motion? I, I don't think I heard a.
I don't know.
I didn't hear the whole council express a consensus about which option.
Why doesn't, why doesn't somebody introduce the ordinance with option A and somebody offer an amendment with option B, and then we can vote on both?
Why do that next week? Why don't I decide?
If we have, I mean.
You're just kicking the can down the road.
Yeah. I mean, I'm only gonna put it, go out on a limb and say, I would support option, I would support option A. I don't know if everybody wants to say what they would support at this time. You know, Randy, Mike, it sounds like you're.
Option A.
Do you want to say where you are, Mickey, and?
Option A is ending at Dayton Avenue, correct?
Yeah, it's the, the least amount of.
There was one that we all, even throughout, we have a map for, which no argument is up to one.
Now, I could go for that.
So I'm just saying, I, I'm for up to date. I don't think we should cross date.
Right, so it'd be on like one side? That's option A.
Excuse me, Ray.
Option A is. We're just introducing our ordinance next week. You're not voting until March.
Right.
Introduction, if you, if you know what's being introduced.
I just wanted to make sure they were, they were understanding.
I guess I was thinking that probably the default option that the recommend, that recommended would be, and then we could modify that. But if we want to, if we want to commit to what we want to be introduced, is everybody comfortable with option A being introduced? It sounds like we have a majority to do that.
That, that's the compromise between not expanding. I mean, you know, that's basic. Option A is, is the, expanding a little bit and not expanding it at all. That's the compromise.
Well, are we comfortable doing that?
Absolutely. It takes one person to interview.
Yeah, okay. All right. So we'll introduce the option. All right, any other public comment? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Certainly.
Second?
Second.
All righty. Thanks, everybody.